This is call to order of the Mount Healthy City School Board of Education Meeting, September the nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Can we have a roll call?
Certainly. Mrs. Anderson?
Present.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Present.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Dr. Turner?
Here.
Okay, can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all the board members had a chance to look at the, um, agenda. There any additions, corrections?
No.
Okay. Okay, then with, can I get a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Oh, oh, you said again?
Kim's first.
Okay. Okay. Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay. All the board members has had a chance to read the minutes from the meeting of August the fifteenth. Can I get a motion to accept them?
So moved.
Or is there any discussions, corrections? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay, now we're under special orders. Anything from the Mount Healthy Teachers Association?
Nope. Um, our biggest excitement about community rights is that, um, all of our representative assemblies are in person this year, so no more virtual option. We'll get back with, um, representative rounds, so looking forward to that.
Thank you. Communications announcements?
Nope.
No? Okay, the Great Oaks Board Report. I put one on the table. Okay. Well, I mean, as of December the thirty-first, our treasurer, Ben Van Horn, will be retiring. And so we went out there and found us another one. And the following is a extensive search and interview process. The board unanimously approved Brian Rabey as the next CFO Treasurer, beginning January the first, twenty twenty-three. He has served as a school treasurer for a variety of districts for twenty-three years in addition to having experience in the private sector. He was, he will succeed Ben Van Horn, who has held the position for the past five and a half years and is retiring on December the thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Both the incoming and outgoing treasurer will be working together closely in the coming months to continue the legacy of transparent and tight financial management of the district. Enrollment update, Great Oaks High School enrollment for the beginning of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year is twenty-eight, two thousand eight hundred eighty-two with one thousand six hundred forty of those students being juniors entering the four campuses. This marks nearly eleven percent increase compared to the number of juniors entering the Great Oaks campus in twenty eighteen. Great Oaks Leading the Way. The largest DECA chapter in all of Ohio is the Great Oaks-Sycamore High School Program. And among the top ten new reactivated DECA chapters in the nation are the Great Oaks-Harrison High School and Great Oaks Mount Healthy High School Program. Three of the, three of the eleven Ohio FFA officers are Great Oaks Miami Trace FFA students and including the state president. This was noted for the rarity of three officers from one school since there are twenty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-one members from three hundred and twenty-six chapters. Congratulations to our student leaders. Advisory committees, each Great Oaks Career Technical Program and campus has a business and industry advisory committee made up area professionals in the relevant career fields. These committees meet several times during the school year and serve several functions. They offer recommendations on curriculum and equipment, keep staff and instructors up to date on trends in the industry, and support students through classroom discussion and job placement. The board approved more than twelve hundred members of, of the over one hundred, um, Business and Industry Advisory Committee for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. The members include business and industry leaders, post-secondary educators, managers, and alumni. Social media. Board members were encouraged to follow and engage with Great Oaks on social media using the hashtag, #DiscoverYourGreatness. That's the end of my report. Okay. The next is the legislative, did you have anything?
There is nothing going on at the State House.
Oh, yeah, there is, but it ain't, they nothing they want to let us know about.
Yeah.
Okay. Treasurer's report?
Thank you. Item A is the recommendation to accept the schedule of bills for July twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Who would?
Stephanie Turner.
Stephanie. Okay, any questions? Can we have a roll call?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item B is the recommendation to accept the financial statements for July twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second. Any question? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is the recommendation to adopt FY twenty-three appropriations within the county auditor's amended certificate.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, next we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. So we have, this is kind of loud. We have all of our administrators here tonight, and we just wanted to introduce them from the different buildings so that they can get to know the board members a little bit and you can see our teams at each building. So after they introduce themselves and just tell you something great that's happened this year, they will go ahead and exit because many of them have been in their buildings since six AM. So it's a long day for our administrators, so we want to let them go ahead and dismiss out. So we're going to start at our Early Learning Center with Principal Shayna Berg.
There should be a microphone up there.
I have a big, pretty big voice, I'm not trying to make you hear.
They won't be able to hear you on the light.
Oh, gotcha, so I'll be more than happy to.
So. Let's try. Testing, much better.
All right, for those of you that don't know me, I am Shayna Berg. I'm the principal of the Early Learning Center.
And I'm Jane Cody, I'm the Venus students, new this year at Mount Healthy.
At the ELC, we are committed to growing greatness, and we have a lot of very exciting things happening. Academically, our teachers have done an amazing job, uh, working with the new reading program, wit and wisdom. They really like the turn and talks that the students get to do and the interactions they have with each other. Our preschool team is working with Mount St. Joe on a pilot called Project Ready, uh, really embracing the science of reading. And then our Orton-Gillingham multisensory approach that teaches kids all about their letters and sounds.
So one of our big pushes, um, this year is attendance, and so we created, um, for September is Attendance Awareness Month. So each week in the month of September, we had a theme. So the first week was, we had a ten dance, so every day at eight-ten, we danced. Last week, our students signed, um, pledges with their parents that they will be attending school, they'll make their effort to attend school every day. We had two classes, we got a hundred percent participation, so they earned a pizza party. This week is Show Your Spirit, um, it's all about spirit, and then next week they'll be creating posters of why school is important. So, um, it is a big push for us, and there have been no, um, attendance plans written yet at the ELC, so we're very proud of that. We also have a pledge that our students say every day, it's a Mount Healthy pledge, it was written by our teachers, and we started our Worthy Awards, um, two weeks, two weeks ago, and it's Worthy Wednesday, so we celebrate our staff and our students with our Worthy Awards.
And last but not least, we've really tried to start building partnerships with family and community members. So at our open house, we had a community event, we had Boy Scouts there, we had Girl Scouts there, we had the public library there, we had Jager's, Teak and Farm, and this Thursday, we have them at Teak and Farm, if anybody wants to join us, we'll be there, three to seven. Great, thank you, Ms. Berg. Lot of exciting things happening at our Early Learning Center. Now I'd like to introduce Ms. Brittany Dickerson, and she is our principal at South Elementary.
Good evening, Board, Brittany Dickerson, principal at South Elementary. We have a lot of fun things happening. I first want to introduce my administrative team. I have Dr. Karen Harkness, I have Ms. Tanisha Smith, and I have, uh, Bob Buckheim, right there. And one of the initiatives this year at South Elementary is giving our kids experiences and exposure. Our sixth grade class actually just came back from a mural tour of OTR, and they will be working on an installation of a mural here at South Elementary, and it will be unveiled at their sixth grade recognition ceremony.
Thank you, Brittany. Now Lisa Smith, and Lisa is our principal at North Elementary.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you, guys, for allowing us this time tonight to introduce all of the wonderful things that we have started at North. We're building on a lot of wonderful traditions that they have. And what we are standing for this year is learning today, leading tomorrow. And kind of, um, leading that charge is myself and my team, Ms. Cassidy Wadke, Mr. Deandre Drakeford, and Ms. Victoria Gray. So, under the vision of learning today, leading tomorrow, some of the highlights that we are working towards this year is really focusing on, um, attendance, making sure that our students are there every day, um, so that they are able to learn and grow with the rigorous curriculum. We wanted to highlight with you guys in our brochure just some of the great things that we are capturing. In our classrooms, we have some really amazing, amazing work going on. Our teachers are arriving early, staying late, they are passionate and they are dedicated to making sure that our kids are growing every day. So we really are focusing on the, on the attendance piece, getting our kids there every day. We are doing Perfect Attendance Awards each week, and we're recognizing those students through certificates, um, we're giving attendance trophies out, um, extra recess, they love the extra recess this time of year for those kids that are coming, and they're proud, you know, they're proud to say that I'm here, I'm here on time every day, because there's a lot of barriers that we, we continue to break down to get the kids here. And then just our learning, we are capturing so many great activities and lessons, we're really diving into that rigorous instruction through, um, critical thinking and, and our questioning skills. So please, anytime that you guys would like to get into our classrooms, we would love to welcome you and show you all of the, uh, the highlights that are happening. And then again, we recognize on Friday afternoon, our students and our staff with our Worthy Awards. It is really, um, the students are excited, they're excited to hear their names on the announcements, they're excited to be recognized and along with our staff and all of those qualities that we really are looking for every single day. So, some of the great things that we have started, and we have a lot to do this year, and we're really excited, um, to be, to be doing that work, so thank you for the time tonight.
Thank you, North Elementary. Now, Mr. Morris and the Junior High.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for having us. Like I said, my name is Matt Morris, I'm the junior high principal. Mr. Graffwall is our eighth grade assistant principal, uh, he is on maternity leave, so he is home with the baby. And Ms. Marks here is our seventh grade assistant principal, along with Champion, which is about how we all feel right now. So, um, this has been a great start to the year, um, we've been together six years now, so we've gotten to know each other a lot, so it's been a very, very smooth. Our mission this year is that we want to change the narrative of how people think about Mount Healthy, how we think about ourselves, and that we just want to have a higher expectation for our students, our teachers, and parents and community all together. So right now, we are doing the Worthy Awards with everyone else, um, we have given a hundred and fifty-one of the awards so far. Behavior reports, we have only done fifty-five, and that's down from ninety-nine at this time last year. So our teachers are doing amazing things in the classroom. So they're keeping the kids engaged, and out of those fifty-five, we've actually written twenty-two of those, so those are things that are happening outside of the classroom. So inside the classroom, the kids are doing the right things, teachers are doing the right things, and we're just excited, so thank you.
Ms. Gray, our principal at the high school, will now introduce her team.
Hi, it's nice to see you all. And, um, just for the record, Ms. Victoria Gray and I are not related. So, I know a lot of people have been asking. Um, so I just want to introduce the team from the high school. So we have Mr. Rodney Bowden, Mr. Michael Lindsay, Mr. William Ambergy, and Ms. Amy Criswell. So, things we've been doing at the high school is really working to just change the culture. It was incredibly challenging for our students to come back from COVID, it's actually challenging pre-COVID, but more so coming back, and so we have made that a priority this year, and so it's kind of been all hands on deck. Just being present to our kids from the moment they get off the bus until the moment we get them back on the bus at the end of the day. And so, some of the things that we have been doing is, um, this year we have a student ambassador group, and so if you have not been to the Friday night football game, I encourage you to get to our next home game. They take a lot of pride and stand after school, making up their faces, they're learning chants, they're sitting together, and they're really starting to understand what it means to come together and be a team, and then they're starting to support one another, not just, um, at the games, but also in school. And so we are really excited about that, and we're looking forward to the momentum that they're going to build throughout the year. And the next critical thing that we're doing is related to graduation. This week and next week, we will be meeting with every senior and their parent or guardian to go over the requirements for graduation in the state of Ohio to get their high school diploma. We are going to share exactly where each student is, we will go over their transcripts, we will let them know what path they need to take to get their diploma, and then we will have these meetings again in the spring to see how far they have come. We have kind of worked with the counselors, and everybody is color-coded, you either have a red light, a yellow light, or a green light, and it kind of speaks for itself. For those students that aren't in the red, we're going to create a path for them through, not just school, but after school, through credit recovery. For those students that have a green light, uh, we're just going to encourage them to continue to, you know, stay the course. And for those students that have a yellow light, what additional supports do we need to get you over in the green? And so we're really excited, we're believing it's going to make a significant difference. Last year, we kind of started it in the spring, and we didn't get to do it in the fall, and realized how much more beneficial it would have been to have those conversations sooner. So those conversations will start this week, and we'll do it again at the end of the year. Thank you.
Well, I just have to say, we have an amazing group of administrators, and I've saved the last, the best for last, we have a new school. And so Sarah Richter is going to come and tell you a little bit about our Virtual Academy.
Hi, I'm Dr. Sarah Richter, um, I am the principal of the virtual school. I don't have any other administrative, uh, team with me, it's just me, myself, and I today. And as far as initiatives, since it's a new school, everything is an initiative. We are having, we do have a focus on, uh, just collaboration between staff, between schools, between parents, between students, opening up those lines of communication and getting everybody collaborated and on board so that we can work our best for our kids. We've also been working towards creating culture plans, aligning, uh, curriculum with the various schools, since we are a K through twelve school, we do want to align with all the rest of the schools in the district so that there's smooth transitions, um, from year to year, so, uh, those are our main initiatives, this, uh, at the beginning now, and, uh, we have officially been open for a month, so.
Thank you, Sarah. So administrators, you are free to leave now, you can stay if you want, but you are free to leave at this time. Thank you for coming. So one thing I think that, you know, you heard, we are really trying to personalize the experience for all of our students, and the addition of the virtual school just adds that next layer, that students, for whatever reason, they don't want to attend a traditional school, now have the option to attend in a different way. So we are really excited about the work that they're doing. I wanted to update everyone about South Elementary, and I'm going to actually pass it over to Dr. Ogden, he has been taking lead on this, and he will give us an update of, for those of you that may not be aware, the wall started separating from South Elementary, and that has been a challenge, it happened July twenty-first, and so we've been trying to address that, and Dr. Ogden will give us an update.
All right, good evening, everybody. I apologize for being a little hoarse, I was at a number of football games this weekend, and they were really close, so I lost my voice a little. Thank you, Dr. Hawkins, for letting me update the board, so basically where we're at is there, there's a number of what I'll refer to as, uh, bureaucratic, uh, they're not barriers, just protocols that have to be followed. So, to Dr. Hawkins' point, it, it was identified in July, and we're, we're very much moving along, but it's also, it's one step, the next step, the next step. So essentially, there was what we noticed as a giant crack in the wall, and then where an expansion joint is on the building, that would have really worked. Essentially, what had happened is the foundation has settled, okay? We have had to have the forensic engineer in, school, first of all, structural engineers, forensic engineers, they walked the roof multiple times. I feel like I can pretty much build that. So where we're at now, the, the, in terms of it is a soil compaction problem. Now, there will need to be soil bored from under the foundation of that wing to see, just to take samples to a hundred percent say that's what it is, but everything that the forensic and structural engineer is leading to that, it's basically leaning away this way. I have reached out to OFCC, which in partnership with SHP, um, essentially built South Elementary. So OFCC, and the actual original project manager works for OFCC again, Mr. Rick Schwart, he came down, I met with them, uh, in the middle of last week, along with their legal team, we have also communication that our, the forensic report has been shared, so right now, we're waiting on, we're going to be soil boring, which will be outside and inside underneath the foundation, because that part of South Elementary, the east side, it was built up, so it wasn't the natural soil, there's a retaining wall on the other side of the, the drive, so that was naturally compacted, and essentially, we'll see where we go from there once we get the soil boring.
Any questions?
I do, I know in smaller houses, now, in a big structure like the school, can you raise the building?
Yes, yes, you can, so I will tell you that, I'm glad you asked that. Mr. Schwart told me, you know, because there are some cracks outside the building, I mean, to the naked eye, I'm not an architect or an engineer, but I'm like, that's not good. And so, he looked at me, he looked at it, he goes, "I understand, I've seen a lot worse", and we fixed them. So, um, now, mind you, we need the soil boring, so I, I don't, I don't, I don't want to have to recount what I just said, but everything, it looks like there are a number of things that they can do, from raising it, supporting it, and then also possibly tying in to the rest of the foundation, this is as you go up, because, um, it's a, it's a high ceiling, even though there's only one room, there's not layers, that's where the music rooms are, and they're off of the auditorium, so that actually goes in our benefit too, that there weren't the, the three floors in that area. Any other questions that we're happy to answer?
Cost?
Not there yet.
Okay.
But we're going to
Well, that is one reason why we are going step by step, we first contact our insurance company, and then we have been contacting the people who built it, because we feel they should pay for it, one or the other, so that's why we're trying to make sure that we're going through every step in the appropriate way, so that we can figure out who is paying for the repair.
Yeah, because I know, you know, when you get soiled, you know, the erosion pushes their way.
The unique thing about this one, it's because it's under the foundation, and there isn't sign of water damage, so that, what, what, that's why the forensic engineer really is leaning towards, this is a soil compaction issue, hence why reaching out to OFCC and they, as I
If he's seen worse, then he knows this is happening.
Oh, yeah. I've actually reached, reached out to a couple colleagues of mine who are very much veteran business managers, and when I sent them pictures and said, "Tell me it ain't so", they said, "It, trust me, there, there are things to fix this, I've seen", and, and they actually told me, "I've seen a lot worse." So, but to Dr. Hawkins' point, the, the key is to follow the bureaucratic steps, bureaucratic steps throughout this, and so that we, we can do our due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ogden. The next informational item, we will have a homecoming parade this year, so we are very excited about this. This is my third start at school for the school year, and the first time we will be having a homecoming parade. So, the homecoming parades were, um, paused during COVID, and so this will be our first time starting it back up. So, we hope that the board will be able to join us, we will have a vehicle for you to ride in, we're not going to make you walk all the way, and, and it will be going down Harrison Avenue. You know, I want to thank Scott Bauer at Mount, the city manager at Mount Healthy, he's working with us on that, so we do appreciate that. So we will go back to that traditional parade route, and Arneaz and her team are also planning some really fun things for the students to do around that time. We will be having a district spirit week, not just at the high school, but all of our schools, from the Early Learning Center to the Virtual Academy, will have the opportunity to participate in things like Jersey Day, Inside Out Day, you know, to show their spirit for Mount Healthy. So, October sixth is a Thursday, and it will be at six o'clock, so there will be more details coming shortly on that, but I just wanted to let you know about that. On the seventh, that is our homecoming game, we are excited for this event, and we are also encouraging our alum to come home. So Bryce Blanton, our PR manager person, um, has been doing an amazing job reaching out to our alum, and the theme is Owls Fly Home, and so all of our alum that And so, all of our alum that will take a minute and fill out a form for us so we can get the information, will be getting a T-shirt and some food at the event and then there's a discounted price of $5 to get in the game for them. So, Bryce has been working on that. We are working on posting it on some different places on Facebook, but Bryce, what is our number right now?
That's it this morning and we're at 184 at RSTP.
That's great.
Every decade represented, we actually have, in 1965, that was, and then, 1990.
So, that's amazing. I'm so excited and I will, I guess, do a little bit of a spoiler. The shirt that Bryce designed, which I love, it has the old mascot as well as the new mascot. So, when we were talking with some of our alum, they said that they miss their mascot because it changed since they were in school. So, we're honoring the past as well as honoring the current and the future. So, we are so excited about this event, just to get our alum engaged and then we know that that will expand into other areas for the school. So, that is on October 7th and the alum will be recognized at halftime. So, if you want to come to that event, I know it will be a great, a great night. All right. We did include our packet on Education Destination. I took the suggestions that everyone made at the last meeting. There's a glossary in the back. We separated it out to four objectives and we have kind of put together the changes, but I wanted to give the board an opportunity just to look and is there, if there was anything else that they might want to change. You don't have to say everything now, we would vote on it next month. So, if there's something that you see before then, you know, we can send out a message to everyone or there might be something that you see right now that you'd like to discuss with Education Destination. And this is our 2.0 version. We are not really changing the strategic plan. Dr. Cosby created Education Destination while she was here and so we are just kind of modifying it a little bit to shift to some new visions and focus areas that we have had. And like we said, we did have three objectives. There were two parts kind of in one, but I think, as Ms. Bryant mentioned last time, really honoring our staff by separating out that fourth objective and making that a focus area by itself is one of the big changes. Adding the glossary, so as our community reads the plan, sometimes we use shortened speech or edgy speak and so we want to make sure that if someone's reading it, they can flip back and understand all of the terms in the plan. So, does, is there any discussion related to this or...
I read it once and I do want to read it again.
Yeah.
Because there was some, some things that caught my attention, but I, I want to read it again before I say anything.
Okay, sounds great. Anybody else?
I'll just say that I really like the, I really like the framework, how it's redone. I think it's clear, it just pulls it all together. I like the colors.
Yeah, Jana, this is her vision right there and I think she did, did a fantastic job and Bryce helped to put the specifics together. So, I think it looks fantastic.
A visual way of understanding it.
And so, you know, over the next month, you know, we can look at it and then officially vote next month on Education Destination. And we are having objective meetings right now, even though it hasn't officially been voted on because we did have the plan in place before. Okay, next, I know this has been a full night of surprises. Kristin Yancy is one of our grant coordinators and she is going to give a presentation. We've been talking a lot about grants and so we just wanted to highlight some of the amazing work that is being done by Kristin and her team. You just press it till it turns green.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. I'm Kristin Yancy, happy to be here. I am repping the grants department tonight and my team was kind of born out of Dr. Hawkins' vision and innovative practices and we're maintaining strong with the worthy heartfelt part of our jobs that gets everybody into the value system. So, money does fall into that, it turns out, to help support our students. So, grant writing is very interesting. It is a process that depends on the funder. So, different funders require different steps, different hoops that we have to jump through in order to be awarded that grant. Once the grant is awarded, then it turns into a different story of grant management and that's two of the major pieces of my role here and my team's role at Mount Healthy. If we get about 50% of the grants that we apply for, we're doing pretty good. So, so far, we're doing pretty good in that area. I do have a short activity for us to go through, because this is school and it's interactive, so we're gonna do that tonight. I need the, the important people up front here to split into two groups. So, Mr. Kilgore, you get to choose which side you're on here. You're in the middle and there's three here and three here. Which way are you gonna go? Okay. Oh, oh, I do not agree with that statement publicly. I'm going to put Dr. Hawkins in charge of this packet. And then at this end of the lovely table, I'm gonna put Dr. Turner in charge, this packet. So, we need one person that, from your team, that's gonna be a speaker and one person that's gonna be a writer. Who's your writers?
All right.
Okay. This paper right here goes to the writer. All right. So, Dr. Turner, what's your school district's name? At the top of that paper in blue?
Oh, she gets the blue one too?
They're, they're different though.
We are School District Mountbatten.
School District Mountbatten. Ms., who's the speaker over here?
Ms. Ellis.
Ms. Ellis, what is your school district?
School District Windsor.
School District Windsor. For those of you don't know, that is the royal family and that's my little cue for the queen today. Okay, so, both school districts have exactly the same population and exactly the same needs and they all have five buildings in each district. Each district has 10 thou, $10 million in property tax, $1 million in tangible personal property. And then District Mountbatten, how many millions of dollars do you have in grants?
We have three.
$3 million in grants? And Ms. Ellis, how?
We have 10 million.
You have 10 million? Okay. So, now we see the difference between the two districts. The total revenue for District Mountbatten should be 14 million and the 21 million. Okay. So, now that you have the different districts' basic foundations laid, you have a stack of laminated expenditures that your district can spend. There are some required ones that are in bold that are together. I'll take them apart. And there are some non-required things that you can buy for your district that is in another stack. So, go ahead and take a minute with your teams and figure out what you're gonna spend your money on and you can write that into, writer needs to write that into the squares on your spreadsheet that shows expenditures. You'll notice the permanent ones are put in there for you already. Okay, you're probably fully noticing right now that all of your required expenditures are pre-filled into your Excel spreadsheet and you'll see the total there for your expenditures. So... If you have any room in your budget for extras, go ahead and check them.
We have seven and a half, well, three and a half. Well, from here to here. We have seven and a half million.
Extra?
Extra. But that's what it costs. So, we have seven and a half million to work with. So, like, how many buildings, Carol, is that saying?
Five buildings per district.
So, if we do playground equipment, if we want to put it in all five.
It's sad, but it's easy.
So, that's what we...
No, we don't start with this.
Okay.
The laptop.
All right.
I think that's more important than, not the quid pro quo.
But if we did that at all, how many students do we have?
I feel like there's a dilemma brewing on one side and that there's exploration brewing on the other. Do you sense that, audience?
We got 3,000.
Happy? Sad?
So, we still have 6 million to spend. We'll be with you guys in a few minutes. We still have a lot of money up here.
I tried that and so far, the answer's been no.
About after-school enrichment, a million. Yeah, playground's a lot, but after-school enrichment's a million.
And additional paid.
AD professional development.
To remain cutting edge, okay, I still would bet.
Okay. So...
What we got left?
We still got 5 million. You know, we could, we could do it all.
You could do it all?
Yeah. We're gonna do it all.
Okay. Okay. In a show of hands from the teams, who was able to afford required teachers and staff? Raise your hands, teams. Excellent. Who was able to afford required district curriculum? Great. Required district PD, professional development? Excellent. Required staff laptop and instructional equipment per building? Excellent. Required district equipment? Everybody, yes, awesome. Who was able to afford playground equipment for at least one building? Two buildings? Three buildings? Who was able to afford laptops per 1,000 students? 1,000? 2,000? 3,000 students? Very good. Who was able to afford after-school enrichment? Excellent. And was anybody able to add additional PD to remain cutting edge? Excellent. So, this is a very...
We got better school.
You are, you have more access to money. So, this is just a very simplified activity to demonstrate how grants can influence the bottom line when it comes to providing all kinds of different support for our students and staffs. Next, we have, oh, next, I just want to share some current things that we're working on in the grant department. A safety and security grant for each building, up to $100,000. Leadership grant for the high school is currently in the let's hurry up and wait phase. We just submitted it. We are looking for grant funding for the playground, for the ELC. We are currently working on a STEM grant for 8th grade science that would bring them their own set of 3D printers. Yeah. Currently in, as applied, is a National Education Association Student Success Grant for a women's leadership program at the high school level. And currently in is a native garden grant for the junior high and a district food pantry grant is being managed right now. Current grant management value for Mount Healthy City Schools, you can break this down all kinds of different ways, but I'll just really simplify it. About, a little bit over 3 million is in competitive grants, but over 40 million in all awards in the last fiscal year or so. So, it's very, um... I can't take all the credit. It's, it's a, it's a group of people across our district that is working towards all of these goals. So, it's really everybody that deserves applause. We did create a video to just kind of share with you all some of the actual programming that's taking place in our district with grant money. Everybody see that okay? So, this is gonna talk about IWP, the Innovative Workforce Incentive Program, where we were awarded over $63,000 for one program in one classroom. And the Emergency Connectivity Fund, which we were awarded over $500,000 for connected laptops, hotspots, those kinds of things for students.
Program that we make use of here in Mount Healthy is something called the Innovative Workforce Incentive Program, which is something we call IWP locally for short. But basically what this is, the state of Ohio, along with the governor's task force, has really started to hear from industries in our state that were short of bottom skilled workers in various different fields. Maybe that could be education, it could be information technology, it could be agriculture, it could be something like skill trades in carpentry range back. And so, in order to kind of help build this need, the state has now allocated over the course of the next couple of years, $12.5 million to be earmarked for schools who are willing to put these different programs in place in their buildings. And students also have an opportunity to earn an actual approved industry credential so they can actually graduate from high school with that credential. Here, we are doing a technology course and so we were using funds from IWP in order to purchase new Windows laptops for all of our students because most of our students just use Chromebooks, so we were able to purchase all of those along with the associated software that our instructor's been needing to teach that class so those students can earn their credential.
IWP program has been a great asset to starting the Early IT Academy here at Mount Healthy High School. It's allowed us to, you know, bring this program to our, our students, bring equipment into the building such as new furniture, new laptops, Windows laptops for the kids to use in all of the different classes. It's gonna be helping us to expand some of the other offerings that we do, like we're gonna be adding, you know, some additional equipment when we start teaching computer networking next semester. I think it's just a really an awesome, you know, way for us to bring, you know, that money into our district that can help us offer, you know, some of these really exciting opportunities to our kids that otherwise they may not be able to get, you know, in a traditional high school. And, you know, having a partnership also, you know, in addition to IWP, you know, with the University of Cincinnati to bring the Early IT Academy here has been, you know, something that I'm really excited about teaching. I think, you know, what I've seen thus far, you know, kids seem to be interested in this and I'm really hoping to see this kind of take off into the future and, you know, the IWP grant has just really been, like I said, a blessing to bring some of those opportunities here to our students.
It made use of something called the Emergency Connectivity Fund. And those are funds that were provided by our federal government to really allot us with as a result of the pandemic and COVID, really forcing schools to kind of adapt and go into kind of a hybrid or even a fully remote learning environment. And so, in order to do that, obviously, you've gotta have technology that's gonna allow both staff and students to connect with each other, hence the name Connectivity Fund, right?
So, uh, we were able to go ahead and get, um, hotspots for our students, Wi-Fi hotspots if you didn't have Wi-Fi at home. We were able to purchase, um, a large number of new computers extra for all of our staff in the district and laptops, um, that will allow them to connect better and then also, um, new Chromebooks for our students to use while they're at home.
Okay, great, so, um, so there's IWP, that IWP program that Mr. White is running, um, is in kind of like we built upon the early IT program already. And if and when those students earn their industry credentials, we will actually, the district will gain money for each earned industry credential as well. So that grant program doesn't just stop at what they've invested in us. What our students show that we've also invested in them will bring us financial reward from the state as well. Up to $1,250 per industry credential, depending on which credential it is, et cetera. Um, just a little tidbit. And the Emergency Connectivity Fund, which is separate from Mr. White's classroom, was sponsored by the, um, Federal Communications, um, federal programming. So just FYI on that. Um, I have some special thanks tonight. Um, Superintendent Hawkins for encouraging and supporting this work and planning for time this evening to present our grants. Bryce Blanton, Joe Sumpner, and Mr. White. Thank you to all of y'all for, um, contributing to and creating this video. And the school board members, thank you so much for allowing and encouraging this grant work within our school district as well. I hope you see how, um, through our little activity, it can be very, very influential. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Kristin. And Connie is leading our grants department. It's under performance and accountability, so I'm excited to see what will happen this year. So Kristin, Connie, and then I'll have some additional members of their team joining shortly. We're really excited. And so this gives you just a little bit of a feel as we go through and there's even items on the agenda tonight that are sponsored by grant funds. It really does just give our students additional opportunities. Item B is the recommendation to approve the following as a purchasing agent for state and federal programs for the 2223 school year. That would be Brock Kenzer.
Second. Any questions? Could have roll call, please.
Mrs. Anderson? Ms. Bryant? Mr. and Mrs. Ellis? Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item C is the recommendation to enter into an agreement with Springfield Township Board of Trustees to permit Mount Healthy City Schools to purchase rock salt for ice removal and road stabilization from the township's stock of rock salt.
Second. Any questions?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis? Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item D is the recommendation to enter into a service agreement with Best Point Educational and Behavioral Health for school-based health interv- services. And that would be for the 2223 school year.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item E is the recommendation to accept the following donation to Mount Healthy Athletic Department for the boys soccer team. $1,281 by the Catherine Betts Foundation.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item F is the recommendation to approve Conger Construction Group as the construction manager for the construction of the new Culinary Arts Edition at the junior senior high school. And there is a packet in your folder that just shows what they officially gave to us. Pass that down to Mr. Kilgore. It was emailed, it was emailed to you. But that is a, a copy. Sorry about that.
Second. Do you have any questions? Could we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore? Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item G is the recommendation to approve GeoTechnology LLC to explore the subsurface conditions and provide geotechnical recommendations for the Culinary Arts Edition.
Got a second? Second. There any questions? Tell me what all that means.
So this is a company that will come out and make sure that the soil is what it needs to be so that when we build the culinary arts area, it will remain stable.
Okay, I got you. Anybody else got any questions? If not, you have roll call, please.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item H is the recommendation to approve the purchase of three double-stack Combi ovens for district kitchens from 11400 Inc. The total cost is $90,000. Right now, the ovens are not working in three of our buildings. So this would provide Frederica and her team a way to cook food for our students.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item I is the recommendation to approve the purchase of 250 wireless slates to be used with the new Promethean boards. The estimated cost is $50,000 and this will be paid for with ESAR funds, so grant money.
Could we have a motion? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
And I do want to just make a note of this. This was money that our new, um, state and federal person, Brock Kenzer, started looking and there was a rule if people weren't using their money, we could get the money that they were not using. So through his work, he actually was able to get us $63,000 and that is enabling us to get this purchase. So, you know, just really paying the attention to detail and looking at how we can maximize opportunities for the district. Item J is the consent agenda. Give you a chance to look through that.
Okay, explain that to me under the first, the statement under employment.
So, Dr. Ogden can give us more detail, but with House Bill 583, we do have some flexibility for hiring substitute teachers because of the lack of substitute teachers. These would not be people that would be going on long-term. They can have a sub- license for a short amount of time. Dr. Ogden, do you want to give us more detail on that?
There we go. Um, this is, this is the exact same thing we did last year when the state, uh, gave schools in Ohio the ability to hire substitutes without a post, without a, uh, basically a college degree. So we, we, we approved this district last year to get additional subs in. And I will say our fill rates were one of the highest in the area because we did that. And we actually have a couple of those substitutes from last year that are going back to school to be teachers and we're very much hoping to scoop them up when they graduate. What the state did is they extended it for two more years. Through this school year, the 2223 school year, and then the 2324 school year. But to do it, you have to- So essentially, we're doing exactly what we did last year, but it's a different House bill and we, we have to have another resolution.
So, these people, whoever they are, do not have to have a college degree?
Correct. But they still have to go through the same hiring protocol as anybody that comes in the district with background checks and things of that nature.
Well, I, I would assume that.
Right.
But what I'm asking is, you're saying, I mean, tell me how this person would be valuable to you if all they've got is a high school education?
So there, there's, there's two, two components to answer your question. Number one is, we are still in an amazing, uh, really historical time period of hardly any teachers out there and subs are even harder to find. So the, that is, was the reason we did this last year. State gave us the ability to do that. So they're, they're in classes managing, managing students and following the substitute lesson plans that are left. So it's, it's a prescribed, pre-scripted duties essentially for the day.
And this is just for substitute teachers?
Correct, just substitute teachers.
I understood that part of it, I just-
The biggest benefit, I think, to the district is because we need substitute teachers when illness or something goes through. So if we do not have a certain percentage, then we have to close the school. So this gives us some flexibility to allow us to remain open when there would be times that we would have to close.
The other, the second part to, to my answer that it gives us the benefit is we have a number of outstanding paraprofessionals in the school district that is classified staff. So they do not have a college degree, but they're in the classrooms each and every day. This gives us by law the ability that if I'm the classroom teacher and let's say Connie is my para, then we can pay Connie for the day to be the substitute in there. So the kids have a familiar face. Connie as the paraprofessional knows how the classroom rolls. She's in there every day, she knows what they're on from a, from a curricular standpoint. Whereas before, we couldn't do that. And I will tell you, especially at our ELC, where we have a larger number of paras due to the age and the size of the students, it, it, it really, uh, the success Shayna was talking about, that is another component of that success because those kids then do have some consistency if the regular teacher of record is out for the day. Any other questions?
Yeah. And I can give more information on this. So our business manager resigned at the beginning of the year and instead of hiring another business manager, we took the equivalent of 10 to 15 hours of work per week and we divided it among the people listed here. I took a part of his job. Dr. Ogden took the part that related to, um, business operations. So like South Elementary handling the facilities. Dr. Ogden is over that. Jana actually took over the technology part of the business manager's job and is doing everything related to that. Dr. Wilson took over everything related to transportation. So we're trying to see if we can absorb those. But it is, you know, 10 to 15 more hours a week for each of these people. And so I felt that they should get some more compensation and it's still a major savings to the district. If you look at salary and benefits for a business manager, it's about $150,000. So we're trying to look at doing it another way and that would be saving the district quite a bit of money as well as they're doing an excellent job. Absolutely not. And the people that are part of this group, they are in the executive cabinet. Right. No, they are actually going from a 40-hour-plus work week to a 55-hour-plus work week. And so they are working many, many long hours to make sure that, um, the business manager duties are performed at a high level. You know, our last business manager left in August and so we didn't want to take a chance of just trying to find somebody to fill the position. So that's why we looked at a way to actually add to the responsibilities of people in the district. Even though it's a lot more wo- work hours, they're just willing to do that so that we can keep the district running smoothly. And at the end of this year, we will look at it, you know. We may do a year and they say it's just really too much, you know, if they're working, the work added on to their normal responsibilities. Um, they, and then we may need to look at hiring a business manager. We are not right now. If we look, it would be in the spring because, you know, hiring and education is seasonal. So all of the best business managers are under contract for this school year. So if in the spring, when we talk about if they're like, you know, it just was too much this year, then we would post in the spring and they would start the next school year. But right now, we would have a very, very shallow pool of people to pick from.
A motion?
Oh, yeah, we sure do.
I move to accept the consent agenda as written.
Okay. Now we'll do a roll call.
Mrs. Anderson? Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
And that's all of my report.
Okay, do we have anything we want to discuss? No, we don't want to talk. Okay, the meeting of the next Board of Education will be Monday, October the 17th at 6:00 PM with a work session to follow. Anybody else got anything? Okay. I'll say it's 7:10, this meeting is adjourned. Can I have a motion to extend?
Second.
No, okay. It was loud, that's why I was waiting. Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Oppose? We are duly adjourned.
Thank you.